Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hello.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Michelle.
We haven't seen you for a while.
No, you haven't. I've been I've been out of the office for a while, too. Had some family health stuff, so.
Oh, hope everything's okay there. That's not good.
Yeah, it's been a rough year.
Yes, it has. Yeah, my eldest son who lives in town had COVID a few months ago. My youngest son who lives in Florida has COVID right now.
Wow.
Um, knock on wood. I'm the only one who hasn't had COVID yet.
Where does he live in Florida?
Fort Lauderdale.
Okay.
Probably better he has it now before all of the spring breakers come down.
Right.
But he's pretty miserable right now.
Hi, Meg. How are you?
Hello, I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Hi, Meg. I don't think we've met. I'm Brooke Bell. I'm a senior planner with community development.
Hi, nice to meet you. I just started. Last meeting was my first one, so.
Okay.
I'm new here. Yeah.
Hello, Hersch.
Hi, Brooke. How are you?
Fine. Yourself?
Good. This is my first public event on Zoom. Than a lot of private ones.
Like, this is the biggest part I miss about being in-person meetings, that we can't all just talk to each other in the beginning and hang out and joke around. But I'll get used to it. I'll live.
I'll put on my cat filter for some hilarity.
Perfect. That would be great.
Still haven't figured out how to do that.
So as long as you can figure out to turn it off before we need to.
Well, I have my cat with me in my lap. I can certainly share, but I won't.
It's our loss, I think.
Well, hello, Kate. We missed you last weekend, or last meeting, I mean.
Yeah, it's good to be here.
Yeah.
Michelle, just so you know, Diane and Carl will not be attending tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we're still a couple short of a quorum.
We are. There's Noel, and Judy and Kate Fuller should be here, so.
Does anybody know, it seems like sometimes I can have the raise hand function and sometimes I do not. Is that if we're participant versus like a presenter side of it? Is that maybe one of the issues? Has anybody else figured that out?
Everyone should be in as a participant, so you should have the raise hand.
All they got is rename under my participant name, but.
I have to hit participant.
Uh huh.
And the list pops up and then down on the lower right, it has the raise hand.
Mine just says invite and merge window and mute me. I just muted and mute myself.
So it doesn't have invite, mute me, and raise hand? That's strange.
So you can see participants, you can see all the participants calling?
Colin? I can, yeah.
How strange.
Can you use your reactions button?
Let me, I'm just gonna share my screen here briefly, just to show what shows up as me here. Let's see. Let me know if you can see that.
We can see your agenda.
Can you see this at all?
We can see your agenda.
Oh, I guess it doesn't show the the screen. Alright, glad that didn't work out.
Colin, I have the same thing as you, but for me, when I go my reaction buttons, it does show me raise hand as an option under reactions.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'll try that if I can stop sharing here.
Mine is like that as well. Like Colin's and Hersch's.
Are you on a Mac?
No.
Interesting.
Maybe older version of Zoom.
Could be.
Possible.
We still see your screen, Colin.
I know. For some reason, it's not letting me. Apparently, it's the first time I've been on a Zoom meeting ever.
I can stop it.
Thank you.
There you go.
Stop the pain, please. Okay, I can, the raise hand is under reactions also for me. I wonder if that's just a separate. Because I thought it was under participants as well, so there we go.
Alright. Well, we learned something this evening.
Well, I'm done then. Thank you.
Well, Chair, it is up to you. It is 7:05. I do not see Kate Fuller or Judy Brown. But you do have a quorum.
Okay, terrific. Alright. Then, if that's the case, then I will call this meeting to order. Nancy, can you call the roll?
I will. Kate Townley.
Here.
McDonaldson.
Here.
Colin Hagerty.
Here.
Judy Brown. Don't see her. Kate Fuller.
Here.
Oh, you are here. Okay, great.
She's getting on and then with my camera, but I think I'm good now.
Alright, well, welcome. Diane Lepowski is absent. Noel Atkins. I saw Noel.
I saw his lips move. I didn't see him though.
Oh, he's on mute. I see him, though.
Here.
Carl Adams is absent. And Chair Austin.
Here.
Thank you. A quorum is present.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 2nd, 2021 minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion or amendments? Alright, shall we take the vote, Nancy?
Yep. Ms. Townley?
I'll abstain.
Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, I do not see any members from the public for public forum.
That was my next question about these people who I see here. Alright, if they're seeing that there's no public to have a public hearing. We now will open the case of 2020-30, 1375 East Hampden Avenue, a vacation right-of-way, and I'm supposed to hand it off to Brooke, I believe.
And just for clarification, it is not a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was referring to before, but yes, thank you for clarifying that.
That's okay.
Well, thank you and good evening, commissioners. As I was saying to Meg earlier, my name again is Brooke Bell. I'm not sure, I'm certain I haven't met some of you in person, but this, I haven't presented in front of Planning and Zoning Commission in a little bit. I have been involved somewhat in the Title 16 rewrite. But anyways, if I haven't met you, hello. I'm a senior planner with Community Development Department, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and try and share my screen here, and hopefully we'll have good luck with that. Let's see. Okay. Can everybody see that?
I can.
Okay, can you see when I move my mouse around? Probably not.
It is in presentation mode that I can see.
Okay, so you can see my mouse move around? Or no?
Yes, but we're seeing all your notes in the next slide, so you're not in slideshow.
Okay, let's see here. Hmm. Let's do that. And then we'll do this. And I don't know how to get rid of that next slide. But if everyone can see it, okay. I'm fine proceeding. Does that work for everybody?
Well, do you have double monitors? Do you have dual monitor? You might be showing the wrong screen. You might be, you might be showing your wrong screen.
I see the green slide that says request for vacation of alley right-of-way.
Yes.
I do see your next slides, but everybody's faces are kind of covering that up for me, so it's not on my screen. It's fine, but it might not be the same for other people.
Okay. Let's see here.
Well, and on mine, the next slide is pretty small, so unless it gets a lot bigger when you go to it, it's gonna be almost hard, very hard to see. Yeah, that's really hard to see. Can you get rid of that other thing on the right?
I think if, like Harsh had said, if you try sharing your opposite screen, might help out. This is coming from the guy who couldn't raise his hand, so.
Yeah, let's see here.
Well, that's better because it's bigger. To do it like that, yeah.
Yeah, it's better because it's bigger.
Let's just do it like that. Okay, so as I mentioned before, tonight's agenda item is a request for the vacation of alley right-of-way at 1375 East Hampden Avenue. And before I get started, let me just kind of orient you to the site a little bit. This is a survey of the site with, is the 3,400 block between South Lafayette Street to the east and South Marion Street to the west, and then Old Hampden is on the southern side of this block. This survey does not show the entire block, but I did want to point one thing out, and that is, obviously, the block is bisected by an alley that runs up northerly from the east Hampden Avenue, and then before it makes it all the way to Gerard Avenue, it actually turns right or to the east and exits back out onto Lafayette Street. To put this in a little bit more context, obviously, north is up, but in the right-hand portion of the drawing, across from this property, across Lafayette from this property, and to the east would be the Marx Apartment Complex, the very large apartment complex. And then to the, to the south of, and across East Hampden Avenue, is actually a little retail development that, believe it or not, is actually part of Cherry Hills Village. It's their only retail in their entire city. It's kind of a triangle, and it's kind of a successful little piece of retail. And then moving to the west, on the other side of South Marion Street, is actually a 7-Eleven that fronts onto East Hampden Avenue. And as you travel farther west, there's some other retail establishments and Caccina Tacos and et cetera. As far as this particular property, it's made up of four parcels. They are all owned by the applicant, the Alpine Inglewood Opportunity Business LLC. And the four parcels, the largest parcel is actually what used to be the Bullock's Mortuary, and then across the alley from that was an associated parking lot with Bullock's Mortuary. And then there's two residential properties to the north of the Bullock's Mortuary property, and so all these properties that are bounded by the darker border are owned by Alpine Inglewood Opportunity. And you can see the existing structures on them. There are also two residential properties that are north of Alpine's property, and then, of course, you see the alley that's headed to the east, and then north of that, and going all the way to the corner of Gerard and Lafayette, is the Temple Julia. It's, I believe it's a skilled nursing facility. So that's kind of the lay of the land, and obviously, you can see that these properties are bisected by the alley. So, as I mentioned, Alpine Inglewood Opportunity Business LLC is requesting the vacation of approximately 1,600 feet of the alley right-of-way between Marion and Lafayette. Basically, that's 16-foot wide alley, 100 feet long, and that requested vacation would facilitate the construction of a proposed 118-unit apartment building with structured parking. In sort of return for that alley vacation, and in order to keep the alley functioning, the applicant is proposing the dedication of a 25-foot-wide transportation and utility easement to the city of Inglewood to allow vehicles to access the remaining portions of the alley, and I'll show you that in a moment. And the transportation and utility easement would also allow for the continued conveyance of both public and private utilities. Public being dry utilities such as Comcast, CenturyLink, Excel, and then through this easement would also contain some private utilities, which would basically serve the new apartment building. So in this next slide, we've taken that same survey and superimposed the proposed apartment building over it, and you can see the apartment building does cross the alley. So what the applicant is requesting is to vacate the north-south portion of the alley from this dark line on the north, all the way to Hampden, and then they would dedicate a transportation and utility easement in an east-west direction, 25 feet wide, such that by the time you connect this east-west new portion of the alley to the existing north-south and back out to South Lafayette, the alley would continue to function. You'll notice the east-west legs of the alley, both on the north side here and on the south side, are 25 feet wide, and they need to be that wide to assist with some turning radiuses for trash trucks. So that, in essence, is what the request is. I would like to give you a little background on the project itself, the apartment building project, and I think after I speak and answer some questions, the applicant's architect would also like to speak. But this project really started in January of 2020, but with COVID and everything, it kind of got put on the back burner for about six months. And so in June of 2020, Alpine submitted for an initial DRT, or Development Review Team, meeting, and that initial submittal was a six-story building with 137 units with a combination of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and a structured parking garage of 169 spaces, which is equivalent of 1.23 spaces per unit. I should mention that multi-use or multi-unit apartments are a use-by-right in both the M1 and M2 zone districts. This site actually straddles, has a little bit of of its site in each of those zone districts, but multi-unit apartments are a use-by-right, meaning they can be approved administratively. And at any rate, staff and the Development Review Team reviewed the submittal and provided the applicant with review comments, as we always do. And they were mainly centered around parking, building setbacks, and landscaping. After the applicant had a chance to digest those comments, they came back and with a revised submittal, and really, based on some of the staff comments, the applicant's Alpine decided to reduce the total number of units by about 19 units, down to 118 units total. And they increased the amount of parking spaces to 189, or increased it by 20 spaces, bringing the parking ratio up to 1.6 spaces per unit, which is within 4% of the ultimate requirement, which was acceptable to both Community Development and the Traffic Division. So that's a little bit of background. On top of the parking and unit count, the applicant also revised the design and really increased the setbacks from the street to provide an enhanced streetscape and more ability to have a detached walk that is much more pedestrian-friendly with a tree lawn and a much better trees, streetscape on each of the frontages of Old Hampden, Lafayette, and South Marion Street. Additionally, the ground floor, most of the ground floor units have patios or direct access out to the street, rather than just having an internal entry, which kind of activates the street and I think creates a nicer project. Here's kind of what that looks like. So again, here is really a floor plan and site plan at the ground level. Again, this is only the first floor. It is six stories, but you can see here, again, the surrounding streets, Lafayette to the east, Hampden to the south, Marion to the west. And you can see on sort of the backside of the apartments, you can see the new portion of alley going east-west, and then the existing portion of alley going north-south. And then you can see the apartment units face face the street, and really what this is called, and we've got another example here in the city of Inglewood at the Bell Cherry Hills. This is called a Texas Wrap, and the idea here is you essentially try to hide the parking garage and surround it, could be on two sides, three sides, four sides, with the units themselves, and so each floor of units has direct access to the parking garage. And the garage itself is largely hidden, so it's a nice product. And again, I mentioned that Bell Cherry Hills project at Kenyon and Broadway. So in terms of the floor plan, this sort of tanish-orangeish color is the units that are on the first floor, and you can see little balconies or porches that are exiting onto the sidewalk at the street level. And then this kind of light blue area is kind of an amenity area that's got, you know, a lobby, some co-working space, a gym, and some office space, and then you can see, of course, the parking garage. And then around the perimeter, you see an exterior landscape tree lawn with trees in it, and then a detached sidewalk. I believe that tree lawn is six feet wide. The sidewalk is five feet wide, and then there's two or three feet between the sidewalk and the building for additional plantings, so it makes for a nice streetscape. All in all, I think it's around 13, 14 feet between the back of the curb and the building on all sides. And then you can see some other just setback areas to the north and to the alley where there's some additional landscaping. One thing about this L-building configuration that, to me, relates to the vacation of the alley request. And one of the advantages of this L-building configuration and not having the site bisected by the alley is it creates, obviously, one contiguous building rather than two separate buildings. And it has a number of advantages. One is, if you separate the site with the alley and the applicant tries to develop it, they're either going to have these sort of two separate buildings that each have a parking garage, and also each have some units, which will make it difficult to hide a parking garage, or they, and we don't know, of course, they could potentially try to make one of the sides of the alley more of a parking garage, and the other side more of a, the apartment building, and then what we're trying to stay away from is some sort of standalone or very visible parking garage. And so having a single building helps do that. The other thing it does is if those two activities are separate, the parking and the apartments, people have to go down to the ground floor, cross, and go to a parking garage, and then up to whatever level they're on. So there are some advantages aesthetically and functionally to having one contiguous building. And then also trying to focus on how that relates to the street. So excuse me here. Hard time. Let me see here. Having a hard time switching my screen.
Well, Brooke, if it makes you feel any better, John had the same problem last meeting.
Ah, yeah, let me see here. You're still on the same slide, right? Vacation of alley right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, let me stop, try and stop sharing here. Okay, now that works, I think, right? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so here is an exterior rendering of the proposed apartment building. And we're looking sort of at an angle to the northwest. Long's Peak would be behind there. And so to the right of the drawing is Lafayette. On the bottom side of the drawing is Hampden and then on the farther left would be Marion. And so you can see the six-story building. You can see the streetscape with the detached walk. And then that sort of orange or reddish little area is the main entry. You can see that they've highlighted that amenity area with some additional brick. And that's what that view looks like. The next view is looking kind of northeast from Old Hampden. You can see the entry again. You can also see kind of a rooftop lounge on the left side of the drawing and a rooftop patio on the sixth floor there. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is, I'll go back one slide, is you'll notice that on the Hampden side, you've got a lot of a lot of these patios coming off the units and those are recessed. Then on the Lafayette side, they're sort of cantilevered out. So you get a couple of different looks there. And then the final view here is actually is looking southeast from Marion. And actually, in this part of the rendering where it looks like a kind of a surface parking lot, there's actually an apartment building and I think they left that off just so you could see the rest of the building. But you can imagine if there's an apartment building there, you really don't see much of the parking garage other than when you're just passing by this east-west leg of the alley. But most of the parking garage is hidden. So in terms of other review of the actual vacation of right-of-way request, the request was reviewed by seven departments that are all made up of our Development Review Team, including community development, building, fire, traffic, engineering, utilities and wastewater. None of the departments or divisions had any objections to the vacation request or the proposed easement. When, you know, when you get that easement back and the alley becomes fully functioning again, the city of Inglewood really doesn't have any public interest in the alley right-of-way anymore. The applicant did provide clearance letters from the dry utility providers, including CenturyLink, Comcast and Excel. They had no objection to the alley vacation request. Excel did ask that their existing gas and electrical facilities remain operational when that access is maintained until they've been relocated, which is very typical. And when the vacation, if the vacation request is approved by council, the ordinance will stipulate, you know, that both the city and any private or any other utility providers get to maintain access to their facilities until such time as they're relocated and accepted by those entities.
Excuse me, Brooke?
Yes.
We have two raised hands. Would you like to finish your presentation before taking questions? Or would you like questions now?
I can answer a question now.
Okay, Kate Townley.
Thanks. I just had a quick question about the easement and trying to get like context. I was looking at the Google map. So the cars that are coming out of the easement heading west, they would be kind of headlights outside of 7-Eleven?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
That was just, that's just what I wanted to check on. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. We're going to actually take a look at that right now again. This is.
I have one more hand. Noel?
Thank you. The renderings that you just showed, are they representative of the updated larger setbacks that you discussed or are those renderings of the previous?
No, these are, I believe these are the larger or the latest. I did notice, you can see that on the corner, and I didn't, I didn't, the plan view doesn't really show this. The applicant made the corner itself a little bit more urban. And you can see these tree grates and what appear to be pavers in between the curb and the sidewalk, at least on the corner near this entry and a little bit onto Lafayette. Whereas as you move farther away from that entrance and from the corner, it becomes more of a grass tree lawn. So just a little bit more urban treatment on the corner itself. Sometimes perspective drawings can be a little deceiving. As I mentioned, I believe there's 13 or 14 feet between the back of the curb and the building so that you've got about six feet of tree lawn, five feet of sidewalk and two or three feet of planted area between the sidewalk and the building itself.
Great, thank you.
Oh, no problem. Okay, let's continue on here. So this is just, and I'm sorry that this slide is a little blurry. This is again what a minor subdivision will look like. And I say a minor subdivision is if council approves the vacation of alley request and the dedication of the easement, these will all be memorialized on a minor subdivision. And so again, now you'll have one property. You see this dark line around the entire property that would cross the alley and that would be one single property. And with this vacated portion of alley now being absorbed into the property, but then this east-west leg of property being dedicated as a transportation and utility easement to the city. I should note that the amount of land that is being dedicated for the transportation and utility easement is actually about twice as much land as the the land being vacated for the alley or the vacated alley amount of land. So just to kind of summarize, the applicant is requesting that this alley right-of-way be vacated and distributed back to the current property owners, which is actually the applicant, since they own the property on both sides of the portion of the alley that's being requested to be vacated. The applicant again is proposing the dedication of a 25-foot-wide transportation and utility easement. And finally, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that City Council approve the requested alley vacation and proposed dedication of a transportation and utility easement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Noel?
Thank you, Nancy. I can't see everybody's hands.
I know, that's okay.
The parking lot in the southwest corner at Marion and Hampden, about 34 spaces. Do we know who uses that right now or what uses that right now?
That was for the mortuary. And the mortuary, the applicant, I think, can speak to that. But I don't believe that mortuary is operating any longer. So, yeah, that parking lot in the southwest corner of Marion and Hampden was owned by the mortuary.
Thank you.
Colin?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. It is really a very nice-looking facility and I appreciate the, I've never heard it called a Texas wrap, but it does hide the parking garage quite well. I noticed the turning movements for the new easements were shown, but they don't continue on to the Lafayette exits. I think you said those were the same width, so I'm assuming that's going to be the same movement. But can you confirm that since there is a dead end at the north end as well, that actually will work for both sides?
Yes, and I think that I'm going to scroll up. I hope nobody gets dizzy. But you can't see it very good, but in this particular slide, this east-west that exits to the Lafayette is obviously it's existing. And if you look close enough, you can see it says 25-foot alley. We also did this on another project. I don't know if you're familiar with the new synergy medical building that is right across from the main Swedish entrance on the south side of Hampden. It's moving along really well in construction. And we did the same thing. That building crosses an alley between Pearl and Pennsylvania. And exact same thing, we did a 25-foot-wide alley. I think the applicant and their presentation also has that turning radius. But yeah, it's a common width if you're going to turn it.
Thank you. And I might have jumped ahead. I did see that. I wasn't sure if they were going through their presentation as well. So they'll be following up with some additional information?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I think at that synergy project, didn't the applicant pave the alley?
Yes, and they did. And I believe that, and I'd like to clarify that. I was reading in some of the notes, I believe this alley is going to be paved as well. And I believe it's in its entirety. If I'm wrong, please correct me. That would not be a good thing to be wrong about. But I believe the entire alley from Marion to Lafayette is going to be paved.
Okay, that's correct.
That's a big benefit. That's great. And just one other question. You have the entrance for guests or prospective tenants or owners or whatever right there on Hampton. Where would one park if you were a visitor? Or, you know, just would you be parking in the garage? I'm assuming there's no on-street parking there because that's coming off of the fast park Hampton.
There will be some visitor parking in the garage. And I also forgot to mention some loading spaces. But there will be some visitor parking in the garage. And I think the lion's share of that visitor parking will be real close to the garage entry so that you can also enter, you know, quicker into the lounge and leasing office. I forgot to mention a couple of loading spaces right here where I'm showing with my cursor. Those are loading spaces, not only for deliveries, but obviously with an apartment building, you've got people moving in. So there's two loading spaces there that will handle a large moving truck that can typically move a two- or three-bedroom apartment.
Right.
Yes, Colin?
Yeah, I did actually, that kind of pinged one more question. You'd said there's 1.6 spaces per units. That's obviously for the residential side. Doesn't M2 require retail space, excuse me, fronting Hampton? Is that going to be included with this?
So the difference between M1 and M2, I think you kind of, you hit what the difference is. And that is, is that in the M1 district, you're not allowed to have retail per se. And in the M2, you're allowed to have a limited amount of retail, but you're not required to have retail in the M2. Now, there are some provisions if you have a standalone parking garage that fronts Hampden that a certain depth, excuse me, a certain depth of the first X amount of feet has to be some kind of a commercial use. But retail per se is not required for this project.
I think that's where I was reading on the, maybe on the parking garage side, there's a requirement for 75% of that or something. So I guess because the parking garage is technically not facing.
Correct, correct. And I think that requirement that you're describing applies to certain streets, frontages of Hampden, I believe Clarkson. And there may be another street or two. Now, how that would apply, the farther north you would go up on Lafayette, I'm not sure it would apply the farther you went up on Lafayette. And that's why there is a little bit of a concern to me if that parking garage were, as you go farther north on Lafayette, were to poke out towards Lafayette where it would actually be visible or if somebody ended up having to do that to make a project work. Anyways, we don't know that right now, but this wrap configuration is preferable for that way.
And then just maybe to clarify, there is no retail proposed with this? Because they have like some amenity area or something or? But no retail, yeah?
There was originally, and correct me if I'm wrong when you speak, Hersh, but originally there was going to be a little bit of retail space. It was, but it wasn't very significant. And actually, not having the, unless you're going to have a pretty significant amount of retail, if you just have a little bit, in some cases, that doesn't help the project because the landscaping requirements for mixed use are a little bit less. And so you may get some retail in the project, but you're going to lose a little bit of landscape. So when that was removed and more landscaping was added, I saw that as a positive.
Noel?
Can you describe what's in lots 33 through 36? In one of the renderings, it looks like an apartment building, but on Google Maps, I'm, there's a lot of tree cover, so I'm not quite sure.
Let me, oh, I know, I'm on the wrong slide. You're talking about right over here, correct?
Correct.
So really, imagine there's a building there that the gray, the gray portion of it, I believe it's a three-story, two- or three-story apartment building. I think it's a three-story. If you're on Google Street View, you can probably see that. So the gray portion is the building. I believe there are a few parking spaces on the back of the building off the alley. I'm going from memory now rather than a graphic. And then in the front of the building, there is also some parking spaces off of Marion. And then the green space, I do believe is a green space. And it may have been one of those apartments that had a pool and the pool was filled in. I'm going completely from memory on this, but yeah, it's an apartment building.
Thank you.
I think, sorry, this is Meg. I think Noel, were you asking about north of the parking structure side? So I think on the Lafayette side.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, north of the parking structure, so on the Lafayette side, I apologize. I believe those are two residential buildings.
Houses.
Houses, houses, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was, yeah, turned around a little on Google Street View, so that helps, thanks.
I do not see any other hands.
Okay, Brooke, I'm sure you're going to turn this over to somebody else. On the call?
Yes, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen, thankfully. Yes, so whoever would like to begin, I think it's Hersh Pareek, the architect for the project, and take it away.
Can everybody see my screen and hear me well, the PowerPoint screen? Okay, awesome. Hello, everyone. Thanks for your time this evening. My name is Hersh Pareek. I'm with Pareek Stevens Architects. Brooke did a great job, so I'll try not to be repetitive. I'll try to highlight some of the things that he may not have pointed out. Starting with just the architectural approach, we feel this is a very important corner. It's a gateway to Inglewood. And I think that there are certain aspects of this that to Inglewood and, 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 and I think that there are certain aspects of this that, that, you know, deserve greater care. And particularly, I would say it's, it's this corner and, and that corner, the corner of Old Hampton and Lafayette, and the corner of Old Hampton and, and Marion. And so when we look at this, you, Brooke pointed out, uh, the advantages of a, of a wrap. They're obvious, obviously, because you know, the, the parking is very functional. You get multi-level parking directly adjacent to your dwelling unit, and you hide it from public view. Uh, but it does result in a very kind of large structure. And so we're always striving to, to break it up first into primary, uh, you know, separations and then into secondary separations and, and create some tertiary articulation. So you can almost look at this, this corner here as if that's one building, that's one treatment. And then there is some kind of an interruption and then a different architectural treatment takes over, a more, more articulated one on this corner with this mix of brick and stucco and metal, uh, and then maybe a more simple, more austere one over there. And, and that contrast, you know, makes it appear like it's, it's an assemblage of several buildings rather than one big facade. And obviously these deep recesses of the balconies, uh, they help a lot and, and they create exterior spaces. Uh, you know, promote use of outdoors a, a, and, and just react well to not only our climate in general, but this amazing south frontage, the views and the solar access associated with that. Uh, this corner element, uh, obviously signifies that that's the sort of the, the great gateway corner. Uh, so we're excited about that. The Inglewood code allows us to exceed height for elements such as those glassy corner, uh, which, you know, at night will, will be somewhat of a beacon. A, a very obvious entry. Uh, Brooke pointed out how we wanted to respect the, you know, a kind of reiterate that the importance of that corner by taking a more urban approach with a streetscape and going with a classic sort of urban tree grates, uh, in this hard corner and then transition to a, a, a more softer, gentler, uh, you know, tree lawn. So just kind of wanted to, and I'll talk a little bit more about the other facades in a minute. Uh, moving on, uh, floor plan wise, this, this red area, that's, that's the amenity area and that's going to appear very commercial. And you can imagine this gym will be animating the, the relationship with the street, uh, people working out, coworking, uh, you know, uh, lounge. Uh, obviously post-pandemic, we want to make sure that, that folks have, you know, places to, uh, to work, uh, you know, great access to technology, et cetera. So this, it, it may not be retail, uh, but it'll appear commercial and I, I think that is important. You, you know, we talked about, uh, this, uh, this L-out. And, um, I want to point out something else that Brooke mentioned, all the, the various advantages of, of consolidating these two properties and, and interrupting the alley. Uh, and, and clearly there are advantages for our project, but there's a community benefit that I think Brooke probably overlooked, uh, to, to mention, which is how much more pedestrian friendly this is. Um, wherever you have, you're trying to cultivate a main street along Old Hampton as, as, as Inglewood is. To interrupt that with an alley with, with possible building masses on either side, blind kind of, you know, corner, uh, with side triangle issues, cars coming in, uh, you know, the pedestrians wouldn't feel safe here. But an uninterrupted building mass that, that truly engages with the public realm creates a much more pedestrian friendly environment. This is being done in, in our neck of the woods up north. And in Denver, we ourselves have done two alley L-outs on West Colfax with similar positive results. And then the other thing I'd like to point out is that if this alley were not vacated, imagine the traffic pattern coming down a 16-foot alley, trying to make a 90-degree turn into a garage and then yet another 90-degree turn, essentially 180-degree turn with, with all the attendant problems of safety. Whereas here, uh, there's a straight shot into the garage. So just a couple of things that I wanted to point out as additional advantages. Um, uh, Brooke is exactly right that we remove this building just, just for clarity's sake. So you can, you can see this facade, but this facade won't be seen. Uh, because of the presence of this building. It's a simple facade back there. We're focusing all of our attention on, on, on these sort of gateway elements. Uh, we're very excited about the six-story deck, west, southwestern views, obviously, but from the lounge itself. So imagine like a glassy lounge that then overlooks, uh, a, an open-air roof deck with landscaping. So you have best of both worlds. You could, if, if weather turned, you could retreat and you get, you get 365-day use of the roof deck essentially because you have this heated space. And then from the north side, amazing views of downtown. So, uh, very excited about that. And, and, and the role that that might play a, a, as, as a beacon and, and, and allusion to a, a, a healthy lifestyle. Some, you know, benefits about, some of this has been said already. I won't belabor it. Uh, but, um, uh, one thing that, that wasn't pointed out is obviously that, that this city of Inglewood in perpetuity will not have to maintain, uh, that, that access even we will. Our clients will, um, and, uh, and, and create some much more, uh, viable, uh, a significant gateway project. Uh, a few things I want to point out that we're doing above and beyond what, what Inglewood code, uh, you know, requires. The, the Inglewood staff sort of, it really encouraged us to, to show how, you know, what are the betterments we're, we're offering. Uh, so the increased setbacks were talked about. Uh, there are transparency requirements that don't apply to us that are written in the Inglewood code that apply to commercial properties for obvious reasons. You want to create eye contact. You want to create sort of self-patrolling spaces. You want to animate the, the public realm. Uh, so we are just voluntarily complying with your commercial code and providing 60% transparency along the main street, which is Hampton. And at least 25% transparency along the side streets. There's actually more than that, but these are your requirements, which, uh, for commercial use that we're exceeding. Our project is going to be designed truly, uh, you know, in a, in a multimodal way. Um, you know, uh, obviously we're meeting your bike storage requirements. We will have a very nice bike tune-up, ski tune-up kind of a room. Um, where, where, you know, all, all the toys that, that are typical of Colorado lifestyle, uh, folks can maintain on their own. Uh, there will be a business center and work pods. Um, all this to say that, 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 you know, it's, it's a healthy lifestyle, but it's also cognizant of, of, of knowing that we'll probably have folks living here who are employed at very nearby business, um, uh, businesses and, and employment centers. And, uh, therefore we'll probably use, uh, the car last used public transportation. This is downtown after all. Uh, so we're thinking like that and our design is geared towards that. Health, again, you know, a really well-equipped gym, again, giving it a pride of place in that corner. So we advertise outward, uh, uh, you know, a healthy lifestyle, the roof deck, uh, bringing people together, you know, fostering a sense of community. And, uh, only if you do a, a highly amenitized space like that will folks come. And then once they come, they get to know each other. And then within the units, of, of course, most, um, uh, units have balconies and, and patios. Brooke talked about the patios connecting, uh, the sidewalks, which, which is important, uh, for a host of reasons. And sustainability, uh, just the list of all the things we're doing. Encouraging the use of electric and hybrid vehicles by giving them preferred parking, electric charging stations on each level of the garage. Again, located very close to the entry, again, you know, uh, incentivizing that. We're going through the Excel Energy Design Assistance Program where Excel Energy will give us, uh, a list of, of sort of menu items to choose from where, where, where we may pick more, uh, energy efficient approaches, thereby saving energy for the community at large. Um, and just energy star everything, right? Um, sustainable landscaping, native, Xeric, smart irrigation systems, low-flow pump plumbing fixtures. None of this is required. Uh, we want to do it for practical reasons as well as, you know, because it's, it's, it's a correct design approach. It's a more responsible way of doing it. This slide just reiterates, uh, what, what Brooke already went through. Um, so I'll zip through this. We've made great progress with, uh, the two dry utility holders, designs already underway to relocate those utilities. We're lucky. There's only one wet utility and that too. Uh, it's a sanitary sewer. That's a dead end. So this is a, as far as alley vacations go, and I've done several, uh, this is a relatively simple one. Here's that.
Excuse me. Sorry. We, yes, we do, we do have a question if you could take it.
Sure.
From Kate Townley.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was like, I thought I'd raise it while I was thinking about it. So, um, thank you for all of this and going into so much detail about all the, the amenities and things that you're offering on the site. I, I was just curious with, um, kind of being one of the first buildings on that block to go vertical. Um, what are some of the things, I, I was just curious if you could describe sort of the lighting in, in like the parking garage, balancing the safety piece, but also not too much lighting on the, the residents around there. So.
Sure, sure. A great question. So li, with lighting, I think, um, the first thing we think of is, is trying to balance, uh, safety with sustainability. And you added one more aspect to it, which is light pollution. Uh, we, we want to be 100% dark, dark sky compliant. In fact, Inglewood might already require that, I'm pretty sure. So, uh, you see these, uh, I switched the, the, the view to this, this view of the garage. You see these opaque spandrels. Uh, they're, they're made of concrete in the garage. We do have the option of doing that out of cable rails, but we're opting not to. And, and the height will be such that at least from all the upper levels, the headlight won't be able to, you know, uh, shine outward. So you, you did mention that if cars are heading westbound on that L-out, they will be subjecting some light, you know, to, to, uh, to that, that 7-Eleven. But conversely, if they were going straight down the alley, they would be shining due south. So not much to be done about that. But I think this parking garage will contain, uh, light, uh, very well. And then as far as, uh, the other lighting, uh, there are, there are two things I'd like to point out. Any lights that'll be installed on the, um, actually before that, I do want to say that, that in the parking garage, we do want to, uh, uh, provide, um, occupancy and daylight sensors. Uh, and the idea would be half of the lights would be at a certain level and the other half would be at a different level. And they also make light fixtures now that gradually ramp up. What you don't want to do with occupancy sensor is that a car comes and a light goes on and a car goes forward and another light goes on. That, it's like, you know, the, the, the old Michael Jackson video, you know, uh, where he's walking on the sidewalk. We don't want to do that. So there's a sensitive way of doing it and we will do that. We'll install occupancy sensors. So we're not, you know, uh, wasting energy and keeping light levels low. And then balcony lights, fixtures will be all dark sky compliant. And to the extent that we do any uplighting, and there are two places where we want to do uplighting. One right here, uh, where that roof lounge is, and another right here where that, that the word Inglewood is. And the idea is to uplight it and the job of that overhang and that overhang is to make sure that light doesn't go up. So you uplight it, but you still meet dark, uh, dark sky compliance. So that's sort of the lighting strategy.
Thank you.
Um, sure. So, and I think I'm pretty much very close to the end, only two more slides. This, this is hard to see because it's a, it's a tiny little thing, but this, this shows the letter from the, uh, the trash company saying that they like this configuration. Uh, you know, uh, trash trucks are already used to coming in, making a 90 on a 25-foot wide L-out and a 90 onto the 16-foot. Now they'll repeat that and you can see our analysis of the longest truck available, which is the 30-foot long truck, uh, to be able to make that turn safely. Um, and, uh, yeah, I would like to reiterate that right now, a portion of the alley, which is actually not adjacent to our site, it actually goes north of our site up to that L-out, about that much. I'd say about 100 feet. That is not even paid, paved right now, which we're really required to as part of this exercise to pay off-site, uh, uh, components. And then here's the utility plan has been vetted by, uh, all the various, uh, Inglewood staff members. And it kind of shows that, that right now the sanitary sewer goes up to about here. We're cutting it short, stopping it there. And then the overhead electric and, and Comcast, it's basically, it can be fairly easy to turn around. And this shows some of how, uh, you know, our projects utilities will also interact, uh, with all of this. And, and, um, and that's, that's all from me.
Colin.
Uh, Kate's question, uh, kind of triggered a question for me. I'm not sure if she was referring it all to. Will there be any streetlights on Hampton itself or is that an Excel, um, issue? I don't believe there's really anything on the north side of Hampton, that whole block right now.
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, I think you might be right. And, you know, normally, so here, here we are. And, uh, there, there isn't. Uh, you, you know, uh, as we go, Brooke, I think you might need to answer this because I think when we go through a full review, you might require us to. Muted, Brooke muted.
Um, actually, Tyler, are you still on the call? Uh, Tyler is with Public Works. I don't know if Tyler is still on the call. Yes, he is. Do, would you, um, I have not heard that discussed Tyler, uh, thus far. Do you have any thoughts on that, uh, in terms of, you know, public street lighting, uh, for a project like this? And, and again, this project is, uh, we, they have not submitted for a building permit and we haven't gotten into some of those details. But do you have anything you could add, uh, regarding that Tyler? I see Tyler's name, but, um, I'm not hearing anything. It, it looks like he's unmuted.
He is.
Uh, and if we're, I mean, that, that is not really related to the right-of-way vacation. It just, it poked my interest, piqued my interest. So if that's something we'll assess later, I, I'm not sure if we'll actually see this, if this is all done by right, but maybe just something to consider for, um, staff as they're, as they're looking forward into it.
I agree. And, um, you know, there's potentially, you know, the opportunity. And I know there's some minimum standards for, you know, just regular street lighting, correct? You know? But in terms of, you know, maybe there's even an opportunity for some kind of pedestrian lighting, um, along those street frontages. That's a little more understated. But yeah, I think that's something that we'll have to discuss.
Good question, Colin.
Kate Townley.
Just wanted to ask about, um, the availability of on-street parking in that section of, um, Hampton. Cause it looks like with this design, it's going to take out, um, at least remove at least four curb cuts, which I think is great. And that would potentially provide then more on, of the availability of on-street parking. Um, so I just wanted to see, is that available in that portion or will it be?
Um, so we understand that i- in the, in the new plan, there is not to be any parking along Hampton. So the only street parking, uh, will be on the two side streets. And then I think if I may go back and, and further elaborate on another question that was asked, that, you know, uh, if, if, you know, our entry is here and it deserves to be on Hampton. And sure, some folks might just simply park on Lafayette or Marion and walk on over. But to the extent that, that people make appointments and anymore they do make appointments before they show up, prospective tenants, uh, we are going to have a security bar right there. So there'll be 18 spaces on the ground floor that are essentially for visitors and guests, after which you need a fob to get in. So there, there, there are those 18 spaces that we're providing in our garage.
Kate, I can add one, one thing in terms of the on-street parking as well to what Hirsch said. And, um, I believe Public Works is, you know, looking at this corridor from a multimodal perspective. And, um, there's, you know, a good chances that they'll be looking at bike lanes. So that, that wouldn't necessarily work with the parking either. So, um, so yeah, I do not think there will be parking along Hampton.
But I guess at least a bike lane also would give you a little bit more of a buffer in addition to the detached sidewalk from traffic.
Correct.
Kate Fuller.
Hi. Um, I just had a quick question that Kate kind of inspired. Um, if there's not going to be parking out front, what's the plan for delivery services, um, and all of those apps that are out there? Um, I know like right now at my job, we have to solve the problem of trying to help people get like to the units as fast as possible. I have a lot of clients that are apartments. So the whole thing we talk about around the office is like, nobody likes cold tacos. Um, so I immediately was wondering like with all these new people that are going to be living here, is there going to be a spot for temporary parking for those types of people? Um, that's really the only question I have.
Uh, you know, some, some of this is a property management issue. Um, and, you know, whether o- o- over, over a period of time. And, you know, whether over a period of time, folks like that can be invited into the garage or not. But I'm guessing right now with no parking along Hampton, those folks are going to be parking on Lafayette and Marion.
Okay, are we done with questions from the commissioners? I just have one bit of advice. You might write there on the corner of Lafayette and Hampton, put in some bowlers. Because I'll tell you what, people exit Hampton at a pretty high rate of speed there. It's a little bit dangerous.
You're concerned about the safety of this corner of the building?
Yes, especially if you've got people there that are exercising just behind some glass. I'd put some, well, this is beyond what we're talking about tonight. I just, it was just off-the-cuff remark, that's all.
I sure hope our building doesn't get hit by a speeding car. But I mean, it's an interesting, I mean, you know, we very much could put a corner element here. It would be better said than sorry, I guess, right?
Well, if you've sat in Caribou Coffee for very long, I've seen people come out of the Caribou Coffee parking lot and turn right against traffic into... You know, it waits, it's people coming off of 285 onto Old Hampton. They sometimes don't decelerate fast enough, but that's aside from this. So are there any, are there any other questions pertinent to this presentation?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. So what is the item that we need to do to move forward on this, Nancy?
I'm going to defer to Brooke. It's his, he's managing this project and he can direct the commission as to next steps. Brooke, you're muted.
Sorry about that. So what we would like from the commission is a recommendation to city council for two things. One would be to, if it pleases the commission, to recommend to city council approval of the alley vacation request. And the other would be approval of the dedication of the transportation and utility easement from the applicant to the city. And then they will, they will conduct a formal public hearing as well as a first and second reading of the ordinance to vacate the alley.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for such? Oh, hi, Judy, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. This is just procedurally, but we want... Is, would it be possible, just asking, for one of these to be approved and the other one to not be approved? I mean, is there, can these be, can we recommend that they are both? I mean, that they're both together? I don't understand how that works.
They really are together. Maybe I didn't describe that because one can't occur without the other.
Okay.
So it really is one item. I know I broke it into two things, but it's one, it's one ordinance, put it that way, that will, you know, end up going to council.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we weren't doing two things. Okay, thanks.
Colin, you've unmuted yourself.
I would say I will move to approve the alley request and approval of the transportation and utility easement as requested.
Brooke, does that, thank you, Kate. Brooke, does that motion sufficiently cover what you need from us tonight?
Yeah, I think it's a recommendation that city council approve. Technically, you guys don't have the authority to approve or not approve it, but it's a recommendation from Planning Zoning Commission to city council to approve the alley vacation and transportation and utility easement dedication request.
Let me modify my statements. I would like to move to recommend that we approve the alley request, vacation request and approval of the transportation and utility easement.
Kate, is that a friendly amendment to your second?
Yeah, I think just clarifying that we're recommending that city council approve. Not recommending to approve, okay.
And I can work, I'll work with Brooke on the exact wording, don't worry.
What are these days?
You're fine. You're fine, Colin, don't worry, yeah.
Nancy is invaluable, just invaluable.
You're fine. We'll make sure it's, it's right. We know what you're, we know what you're saying. Okay, and so Kate was seconded?
Is there any further discussion?
Okay.
Seeing none, shall we call for the vote, Nancy?
If you so wish, we can. So Ms. Townley? Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerty? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And Ms. Fuller? Mr. Atkins? Chair Austin? Okay, I believe I got everyone. Did, okay. Motion passed.
Thank you very much, Brooke. And, Arshin, all of you, this was a very well-done presentation. And I think that in general, I might, I might be speaking out of turn, but I think that the commissioners are pleased to see this moving forward.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda, I have one piece of paper that says attorney's choice and one piece of paper that says staff's choice. You pick it.
Dugan?
Mine's easy. I have nothing else to add for this evening's entertainment.
I do not have anything else to add either. Do you have anything, Nancy?
Just that John Voberl and Dan Perimba will be back at your next meeting to continue the city center rezoning discussion.
We'll look forward to that. Commissioner's choice, Colin?
Nothing today, thank you.
Noel?
Nothing today.
Kate Townley?
I'll just mention two things real quick. Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute at Denver University has their upcoming conference. And of course, it's virtual this year. It's going to be over several days. There's a lot of great sessions, well, obviously on land use, but also on housing and housing for the whole region. So if you're looking for any professional development or anything like that, it's a great opportunity. And then I was also going to mention for Brooke or for other folks to, as different projects are coming on board, the CPACE program recently added active transportation components as an allowable benefit, I guess, if you will. So projects are looking for support for, can be for pedestrian lighting, bike racks, showers, things like that, that that's an allowable thing now.
Great, thank you.
Noel? Did I already call any? No.
I still don't have anything, but thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the box has shifted on me. Somebody logged off and the box has shifted. Kate Fuller?
Nothing. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. And Judy?
I just want to apologize for being late. Not, it was unpreventable, but thank you to Nancy for reaching out because I lost track of time. Anyways, other than my ongoing push for the Inglewood Chamber and the Leadership Academy, so, or leadership, whatever they're calling it, you know, leadership, whatever. Anyways, thank you for those of you who attended. Apparently, a couple of you did, so thank you. And if you don't follow them on social media, whether it's Instagram, LinkedIn, or Facebook, they're doing a really good job of letting everybody know what's going on in our local businesses. So a lot of great events. And David and Lindsay have been doing a fabulous job of getting that kind of information out. So if you're looking for, of course, we want it to be chamber members, but if you're looking for local stuff to, in places to support, please, please make the effort, it is much appreciated. And if you know somebody who might benefit from that, you know, we really, they have done, I can't say enough about how much David and Lindsay have done to really get and support our businesses in cooperation with the city. So they were instrumental, especially David, in working with the city to get a lot of the grants that were offered. So kudos to the city and to David for working that so hard. So just wanted to make my regular public service announcement.
Thank you very much, nice. Meg?
Thanks, sorry. I'm working with two mouses on two computers right now. I just had a question that I maybe should have asked earlier, but now that we've made this recommendation to city council, does city council look at this at their next meeting? Or what does that process look like?
It's not going to be at their very next meeting because I think we need more time than that to advertise. But it will be, there's not a, it will be in the near future, put it this way. Right now, we're tentatively have a placeholder March 15th. Sometimes their agendas are driven by, well, by how many items they have in general. But we wouldn't want to wait a year or anything like that.
Okay, that's all. I was just curious, the timeline for this project?
Yeah, I think it will go to council as a public hearing and then a first reading and a second reading. So that alone can take six weeks. And then there's a 30-day referendum period before it becomes effective. So you're talking two and a half months. And I don't think the architect is on anymore, but I know they were trying to, I remember a little while back, them talking about trying to get drawings in for a permit, potentially in May. And I don't know if that's still on schedule or not. Obviously, they need to know, you know, things like whether the alley will be vacated or not. But, yeah, they're certainly wanting to move ahead.
Great, thank you. And that's all I had. Thanks.
I do have a comment. I wanted to thank both Nancy and Dugan, who responded to a question I had about, you know, should us, should our fellow commissioners be talking to other people and to clarify how we should be conducting that sort of conversation? And I found his email very informative and helpful. I encourage you all to take a look at it. I think I may have violated a couple of very small things there, but I don't think it was... I think I was talking about more things we voted about than things we were coming and voting on about. But always a good reminder. And thank you both very much for taking the time to respond to us in a very clear manner. Anything further for the good of the group? All right.
I was just going to say, welcome, Meg. Sorry, I didn't have a chance to do that earlier.
Of course, of course. All right. You stand in adjournment. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.